Welcome to the 27th of August Committee, uh, sorry, Planning Commission meeting. Please stand for a minute of silence and reflection. Thank you, be seated. So, at the beginning of each Planning Commission meeting, we allow a comment period for anyone to come forward to speak for three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. So, if there's anyone here to take advantage of that time, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the committee reports. So, we have a committee report from the text change committee.
Thanks, Edie. I've got two cases to briefly discuss from the text change committee from the August 20th meeting. The first being TC 4-19 with regards to erosion and sedimentation control, dealing with prior plan approval. We unanimously recommended approval of this text change to the full planning commission with updates to text for the following two events. First, being more than one notice of violation, and the second, having language from the state statute defining what is the two-year timeframe for needing or for being a repeat offender. The second case that we discussed was TC 6-18 Cottage Courts. We moved the need for 90-day time extension to complete this case. Many of the issues that we dealt with during that meeting was the common space and how, and the quantity and the amount of, amount of common space that needs to be dedicated for stormwater management and dealing with stormwater management with regards to common spaces in cottage courts.
Okay, thank you. So, I'd like to start with the first of those, or with the second of those two items. The cottage court, because we need a 90-day extension. Would anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's move on to TC 4-19, erosion and sedimentation control, and I would like for staff to come forward and tell us about the changes that were made to the text that we asked for in order to approve, recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. So, as the chair of the committee pointed out, there are really two changes and they only impacted, hold on. Okay, the changes only really impacted one section of code, which I'll move to. So, the two changes requested by the committee, the first was that the text change specifically address only repeat violators. So, originally, the ordinance was drafted so that a person conducting a land disturbing activity who has been issued just one notice of violation within the past two years be subject to submitting an erosion and sedimentation control plan for land disturbing activity below 12,000 square feet. After some discussion and input from the public, there was a decision to up that to two or more notices of violation within the past two years. I believe there's representatives from Stormwater here could provide statistics on how many repeat violators we have, if that's of interest to anyone on the commission, but that change was made, as you can see above. And then also, there was a comment to the city attorney's office to make sure how we are measuring this two-year window is consistent with state law, and so there was a comment added, as you can see in bullet point number two, that, and this is taken straight from the text, that for the purposes of the subsection above, an applicant's record is considered for the two years prior to the development permit application date. So, they're really looking for when a person or entity comes in to submit a development permit application, that is the starting point for the window, and then two years from that date is where they're looking for any notices of violation that would be issued. So, those are the two changes made. As I said, representatives from Stormwater here, if there's any additional questions, and also city attorney as well.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this point?
I have one because I missed the committee of the whole meeting. I missed, just out of lack of knowledge of this, in E13, the language is upon the occurrence of off-site sedimentation. What does that mean?
I'll probably defer to Stormwater, just to make sure I give you the technical correct answer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Off-site, off-site sedimentation and just, and just what that is referring to is when an active construction site is losing sediment either off their property or to the public right of way, so either one. So, this is actually one of those sections, one, or one, two, and three, were actually in our code already. This was just reordering them and putting in a, in a more concise location, so it'd be easier for us to find. So, essentially, if we go out during the enforcement process and find a site that doesn't have a permit, that's losing sediment to an adjacent property or to the public right of way, we then require them to come in for a grading permit regardless of what their land disturbance is.
Any other questions or comments for staff? So, Catherine, since we heard this in text change, but we haven't heard it here, do we need to open it up to?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, if there's anyone from the public that is here to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. If there's anyone opposed, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm bringing it back to the table. Any further conversation before we take a motion about this text change? We're ready to?
I believe we're clear, and I think everything was answered from last week's meeting, so I think we can go ahead.
So, I'll move approval. Do I need to read? I probably do. Somebody else have this call now?
I don't have it on me.
There it is, but it's little. All right. I move to adopt the TC 4-19 as proposed, because the action is reasonable and in the public interest. It will enable staff to more effectively monitor those who violate the city's sedimentation and erosion control regulations and update the UDO to improve its readability and enforceability. So, move.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So, we're moving on now to old business, and I just want to remind folks that for most of these cases, we have already heard from the applicant and from the public, so any further discussion from the applicant or the public, we will need to vote for extra time, and I'm already aware of several cases where that's probably going to be what we need to do. So, the first case is CP 5-19, Ponderosa Service Road.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. This is a comprehensive plan amendment to amend a future land use map from office research and development to moderate density residential and community mixed use, about 23 and a half acres, and a correction here, the North CAC has voted on the request. I believe that vote took place on August the 8th, and they voted six to five in favor of the request.
Before you go on, can you make a comment about the presence of people from the county who were there and their ability to vote at the CAC?
There were people from, who reside in the sub, near the proposal area. However, they are residents, that area is not within City of Raleigh's ETJ, so technically they were unable to vote for this proposal, or vote on the proposal.
Thank you.
However, it was six to five by the North CAC. Apologize for that error on the slide. Note presently, the area designation of office research and development. This is a, this proposal would result actually in a split designation with, with one of the parcels, and the, you note the change to the community mixed use along Common Oaks Drive. One parcel that's part of this proposal is already designated as moderate density residential. Again, it's in the county's jurisdiction presently, zoned R30, the western portion of the properties HD along Common Oaks and Ponderosa Service Road. This is across Capital Boulevard from the jurisdiction of the town of Wake Forest, and on the periphery of the Wakefield area, note the presence of the multifamily development at Wakefield Hills condos, and then the Wakefield Common Shopping Center to the north. And there is an existing manufactured home park to the south of this area. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent overall with the 2030 comprehensive plan. We did note two inconsistent policies, because this proposal, if approved, would remove about 22 acres of land from these designations, which are for the, the growth of employment and business. However, technically, they are inconsistent with those policies, but this is a rather minor reduction, and there is still significant areas of office research and development, as well as the business commercial areas near this site. There is a rezoning proposal associated with four of these parcels, and that's currently tracking as Z1819. Again, a greenway easement would be dedicated, if approved, and brought into the city, and it does require annexation in order to connect with city services. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for staff?
Again, I missed the committee of the whole meeting. The status of that rezoning case is what?
The committee of the whole did not make a recommendation. They deferred until September the 10th, so the case will be brought up again on September the 10th.
And is that our, that's not our committee of the whole, but that is, that's coming back to, to full Planning Commission without a recommendation, right?
It'll come, it, it was voted out of committee of the whole without a recommendation, and will be taken up by the full commission on the 10th.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant here? Yes. Okay, I got a call from the applicant yesterday, and he would like some additional time to speak. Does anyone?
How much would you like?
Five minutes? Is five minutes sufficient?
More than. Thank you.
All right, so we need to vote, and we need to give the opposition time as well.
So, I'll move, we give the applicant five minutes, and the opposition, five minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Good morning, David Brown, Withers Ravenel, here behalf of KB Home and the property owners. Don has done an excellent job, again, outlining the features of this request. I don't think that we have anything else to add. We're just here to make ourselves available to answer any questions. Couple of quick updates, we have drafted the revisions to the conditions as requested. Those will be submitted no later than this Friday, and including the Parkway frontage addition. If possible, it would be great to advance or hear your thoughts, at least on the comp plan amendment.
Thank you. Could you speak to us about the stormwater discussion that we had yesterday with regards to the 40% tree conservation?
Will do. So, this case is in the urban watershed overlay, and we're keeping that in there as our request for the zoning. In response to Mr. Tomasulo's request, we are proposing three additional conditions related to stormwater management, and they dovetail with the urban watershed 40% tree coverage, to help guarantee that the trees end up in the place on the site where it will do the most benefit to Richland Creek, because we agree with that. What we're saying is 1,000 feet offset from the western property line, which is Richland Creek, that we would prohibit what we call development. We would certainly allow infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, and greenway trail, if we needed to install a sewer, if we don't think we have to, or other utilities, but things that are infrastructure-related, but not what we call development footprint. Within that area.
We're in question, so you can stop.
Within that area, there's also the floodplain, and we're proposing no fill to the floodplain other than to install utilities or infrastructure. And the third component of that, that there is a wetlands, and it's very substantial, and we would stay out of that other than to install needed utilities or infrastructure. We hope that that is seen as a, to clarify where the trees go. 40% on this site is a very substantial amount of trees, and we want them close to the stream.
Mr. Tomasulo, do you feel like that addresses?
And we can keep talking if we need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I would like to see if our stormwater staff has any reaction to those thoughts or those possible conditions.
As far as what David was referring to, I don't see any issues with that, because they're not talking about putting the actual stormwater devices in the 40% forest area. Just, you're not talking about that.
Conveyance is a.
Yeah, just conveyance, which is allowed currently, but it's not the actual treatment device, it's not being placed in the 40% forest station, but.
So.
These are conditions to the zoning case, right?
That is, that is correct. There was just, I think these two comp plan amendment and the zoning case are dovetailed together very tightly.
Yeah, so what's the, I mean, I don't, I'm prepared to vote for this, I guess, but what's the wisdom of voting on this ahead of the zoning case? Why don't we? Should we act on one before the other, or is better to?
It's up to you. The difference would be, I'm assuming that this is, were to make the rezoning consistent with the comprehensive, the future land use map of the comp plan, so there wouldn't be an inconsistency when the rezoning case comes forward. As we've discussed, if there was an inconsistency, then it would be an automatic amendment to the comp plan.
So, any more questions for Mr. Brown? All right. So, can I bring you back up, Don? Can you come back up? So, I understand that, that some of these conditions are still in the works, is that?
For the rezoning case, yes. The applicant has until close of business Friday to submit those revisions.
Okay. So, typically, we haven't voted on cases until they've had all the conditions that we intend to vote on before us, so we probably were not prepared to vote today unless someone feels strongly about moving this forward.
The rezoning case isn't before you today?
Okay, so that's for the rezoning case, sorry about that. So, we could vote this forward today as it stands, all right. It's difficult to have these things separated. All right, any further conversation from folks who are here in support? Is there anyone opposed who's here, who would like to come forward to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the table. Any further conversation about this case before we take a motion?
Seems applicant is a considerable effort in order to address the concerns that were brought up previously, so I take that as being very positive.
All right, thank you.
Right, I don't, I, I'd like to be consistent with our handling of comp plan amendments in advance of zoning cases, but this doesn't seem to be a particularly close call. Zoning case can stand on its own. I think this amendment makes sense, so I'm ready to vote for it.
So, is someone ready to make a motion?
Yeah, you're all, all right, I'll, I'll move that we approve the CP 5-19 as being consistent with the comprehensive plan overall and consistent with the policies that apply to this area of Raleigh.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So moving on now to CP 619 Blue Run Lane. So I have a note from Mr. Birch that the applicant would like to defer this case.
Yes, applicant has indicated that they would request a deferral of this case until September the 10th. I would note that the September 10th meeting would be your last regularly scheduled meeting to take action on this case.
Okay. So we would have to vote for additional time for the applicant and for opposition?
On the 10th, on the 10th.
On the 10th, so we do have people here who have made the effort to come out today. So I think we've taken comments from folks who've done that. Catherine, what's the, we just vote for time or?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay, so we'll need to have both sides, right? All right, so.
How many people are here to speak on this? Two?
Three.
Three. Well, he's pro, he's con. So how about we start with five minutes each? I'll move that we give the applicant five minutes and the opposition five minutes. And if you need more time than that, I'll try to get you more.
But just a reminder, please don't repeat what we've already gotten as far as information in the case already. So, thank you. So do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Birch?
Great. Good morning. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. Just want to provide commission with a few updates and then also just clarify our request for a deferral and extension of time, which could either be handled today or on the September 10th meeting. So when we were last in front of you in, in June, we indicated that, you know, at the time, we had included three parcels. We had indicated that we were going to remove from the scope of this request, the southernmost parcel, the Pool property. We had submitted that to staff, but also I think it was kind of referred to us to also make that very clear to the commission that we were removing that property. We have a copy of our kind of amended petition here that only includes the two northernmost properties that are within the scope of this amendment and can provide this to whoever needs it. But, so I just want to be very clear on the scope of our request. It's just the two northernmost parcels. We gave a presentation to the Northeast CAC on August 8th on the, kind of the comp plan, touched on like both the comp plan and the rezoning. We anticipate filing the rezoning by the end of this week. Because we anticipate the rezoning to include conditions related to, you know, transitions to the south as well as other items given our proximity to the Neuse River. We think, we would like to try and line these two up, the comp plan amendment and the rezoning. So the deadline for your action is September 23rd. Happy to come back on the 10th. The CAC next meets on September 12th and October 10th. Your next meeting after that, I would believe is on the October 22nd meeting. That's actually after 60 days. So in addition to requesting a deferral, we would request that to the October 22nd meeting. But as a part of that, would also request a 90-day extension to just cover that. And we think that that will allow for both the land use map amendment request and the rezoning request to kind of marry up on timeline, so. But here to answer any, any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Birch?
Removing the one parcel, start with 102 acres, how, how much are you removing?
So we are removing approximately 40 acres so that, or 42 acres so that the resulting request is for 60.1 acres.
Any additional questions? Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Okay, let's bring the folks who are here to speak in opposition down. And typically, we keep each person to two minutes. We didn't specify that on the, on the vote, but.
Morning, counsel. Name's William White.
Your name and address, please.
Ma'am.
And your address, please.
7112 Blue Run Lane, Raleigh and C. We're in jurisdiction, not city limits. I've been living on those in close proximity to the property in question for 45 years. I'm located approximately 400 feet from Ms. Poole's land that was just removed. But I received no notice from anyone about any proceedings that were going on. I think I should have received notice. I'm, been farming the land and using the land for all these years. My concerns are about the sediment. There's a small Beaver Creek or wetlands, as y'all refer to, on the property of Mr. Chapel and Mr. Lewis. Has already been filled up with sediment from where the state buried three trillion tons of rock when they built 540. On the south end of the Ms. Poole's property, my property is a creek, referred to as Smith Creek. Up the creek, across 540, they've built approximately 2,000 units. The creek is full of sediment. It hasn't been addressed. They've just about filled the floodplains up with sediment. There are 43 houses on Pine Drive. And then, of course, Ms. Poole and myself and a rental house are the only houses on Blue Run Lane. It's farming area. The land is still being farmed. And also, y'all may have noticed in the news that they have tested positive E. coli at the Buffalo Road Bridge where it crosses the Neuse River. All this property adjoins the Neuse River. There was a trailer park called Riverwalk Trailer Park. I don't know what type of sewer system they had. But for 45 years, it never tested positive E. coli. And now they're starting developing the Riverwalk Trailer Park. And I think that perhaps maybe the sewer system was disposed of improperly. And if there'll be some checking done, you'll see that that's where the E. coli is coming from.
Thank you, we're gonna have to.
Thank you.
That's your time. Was there someone else who wanted to come forward to speak? Okay, so that's it. Does anyone have any questions? At this point?
Just to gain some clarity, it looked, I was struggling a little bit just with some of the, the actual current land use. Is some of it in our jurisdiction and some of it in the ETJ? Or is AP, is that agricultural production? Is that a City of Raleigh zoning classification or?
I believe this area is within the city's ETJ. The AP is a city category. And along, of course, with the present flume designations.
And what, what is AP?
Agricultural production.
Okay.
So does this outline currently have the property that was dropped or is it?
No, this includes the original proposal with the three parcels. We, we have not received an amended proposal as of today.
And so will the CP change to be amended so that that parcel is dropped out or just the zoning case?
Certainly. Once we receive the revised application, we will certainly make modifications to the maps.
All right. Well, it sounds like, well, does anyone have any further questions or concerns at this point that they'd like to express?
Well, I saw in your report, Don, your note that there's very poor vehicular access to this site. So I think that's something we're gonna have to think about when the zoning case comes forward. But for the time being, I guess the applicant is asking us to defer, so I would move that we defer and ask for a 90-day extension from counsel. Can I do that?
I was just wondering if the deferral was actually the October meeting? I can't remember what the.
So the deferral, I think, would be the October 22nd, but with a 90-day extension because that day is after a 60-day.
Right.
Okay. Yes, so.
Okay, October 22nd.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on. We're looking at CP 719 Sumner Boulevard.
Good morning. That's correct. CP-7-19 is for a comprehensive plan amendment for Sumner Boulevard in between Capitol Boulevard and old Wake Forest Road. Last time you saw this case, it had not been to the North CAC. As of now, it also has not been to the North CAC. But there is a slight change to what the applicant is proposing, which I'll show you. So the original application to amend the street plan map showed a different alignment for Sumner Boulevard as well as a different designation, dropping from the four lane to a two-lane divided. And so the applicant has proposed a different alignment in response to communication that they've had with the neighboring property owner from the Kennedy Space Center, which you have available to you in your backup packet and you can see here in this slide. So moving the alignment slightly to the north there, so it skirts the property line as opposed to crossing through the centers of those two properties. Otherwise, the case remains the same as the last time you saw it. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and there are no outstanding issues.
So can you say when the CAC is going to be able to vote on this?
The applicant has requested an item on the September agenda of the North CAC.
Okay. Do you anticipate a vote at that time or will they have to come back a meeting later?
Typically, they don't allow a vote at the first meeting. Also, voting by the CAC, of course, is the discretion
Sure.
of the planning commission to require. And as far as timeline goes, you would have one additional opportunity to request an extension. The first meeting in September, September 10th. If you request an extension at that time, that would give you time before the deadline.
Any questions or conversation?
Well, I guess I'm curious whether there's any time imperative on this thing or whether we can defer it again.
This is citizen initiated and so I would have to let the applicant speak to that, whether they have urgency with the case.
So do we need a motion to let the applicant speak for two minutes?
We can just ask questions without
Yes, that's correct.
without making a motion. So do we just have questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's bring the applicant forward. Okay.
Good morning again. David Brown, Withers, Ravenel.
So David, is there some urgency to this thing or can we comfortably defer it?
We can comfortably, we can defer this, please, if that is your preference.
In, in addition to deferral, you know, I'm wondering whether we need to go ahead and request an extension. So, because it sounds like we won't get a vote until probably October from the CAC.
That is very much possibility.
Okay, and our deadline is, for action is September 23rd. So I think we're in another one of those situations where we need to both defer and request an extension. So does that seem reasonable? Do we have a motion to that effect?
Second.
And we need a deferral to what date? So.
What was that? 60, 30 days?
September 10th.
September 23rd, I think you said.
Yeah, our deadline is September 23rd, so do we need a 60-day to get us past October?
I would advise you to land on the side of caution and just go 90 days, just in case.
And 90 days, and when do we want to bring the case back from deferral or back?
I propose that we check back in with our case planner after the first review by the CAC. It is possible they'd take a vote on the first reading.
We won't make a date then. All right.
90-day deferral.
Yes, sir.
Or a 90-day extension. And a deferral to a meeting sometime in the future. All right.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Any further conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. We are at Z 1019 Bloodworth Street.
Good morning. All right, Z 1019 South Bloodworth Street. This case initially appeared before you on June 25th and it's been deferred a couple of times for the CAC vote. The small update I have before I begin the presentation is to the information in your packets. This appeared before the South Central CAC last night and they voted in support of it. So that's not reflected in the packet because the packets are due in board docs before the CAC took place. However, I will update that and it's reflected in the presentation. So this request is for two parcels on South Bloodworth Street to rezone from heavy industrial to industrial mixed-use, three with some conditions. It's a 2.18 acres. So the property around it is generally industrial mixed-use with a three-story height limit. And there's, this is a remaining heavy industrial parcel in the area. And then if you look to the west of the site, there's also some remaining heavy industrial. And then to the north, there's residential as well as residential to the east of the site. To give some perspective on where the site's generally located, it's at the intersection of South Bloodworth and Hoak Street and just some other landmarks in the area. The Cargill site is located over here. Then there's the general heavy industrial in the area that we saw previously. Mount Hub Cemetery, sort of one of the larger landmarks to the west. And then you see the residential areas that are generally outlining the site, just to give some context on where this is located. Zooming in on the site, again, it's located, South Bloodworth Street is the street right along here. Then we see Hoak Street to the north and Saints Avenue, which is a small street to the south. And this is just east of Hammond Road. This site right now is mostly undeveloped. It's a large lot. And then there is a building on it, so as you can see from the different perspectives looking into it. The building on the northern edge is located here and then the rest of it is generally an undeveloped piece of land. The proposed conditions for this are to prohibit adult establishments and pawn shops. Existing versus proposed zoning, again, it's currently zoned heavy industrial. The proposed zoning is for industrial mixed-use with those conditions that would prohibit pawn shops and adult establishments with a three-story height limit. It's located on a 2.18 acre piece of land and I realize the proposed says 218. That should have a decimal point right there. The residential density currently in heavy industrial residential is not permitted. So there would be a large increase in that and the estimate is about 40.37 units per acre is what could be allowed with a maximum of 88 units. And the setbacks would change significantly from what's allowed in heavy industrial, which is 50-feet setbacks to five-feet setbacks in the front side. And then the rear would be that either zero or six-foot setback. There's no urban form designation in the area. The future land use is office and residential mixed-use, which is inconsistent with the proposal as it would envision office residential mixed-use would be the zoning category. However, it's generally consistent with the comprehensive plan overall, despite being inconsistent with the future land use map. And there's no urban form guidance. The policies it's consistent with would be zoning for housing as it increases the housing stock in the area. Infill development as it's filling in a parcel that's generally vacant, providing a mixed-use development. And similarly with mixed-use redevelopment for policy ED 1.2. Inconsistent policies again are that future land use map inconsistency, that it's requesting industrial mixed-use in an area with an office and residential mixed-use flume designation, ancillary retail uses. And that policy. ancillary retail uses, and that policy relates to the comprehensive plan's suggestion that in office and residential mixed-use, retail should be limited to a smaller amount than what is being requested today. And policy LU 11.3, commercial uses in industrial areas, that policy just seeks to preserve industrial areas in the city. There's no outstanding issues for this case, as they've been to the CAC and received their vote. The deadline for action is September 26th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
At a high level, I guess it was surprising to see that, that the inconsistent preserving industrial uses seems to contradict itself. And I guess, since it is continuing industrial use, it's just surprising to see that on there. Is that because it was heavy?
Yeah, so I think those policies, so in the application of the policies, we look at all of them. I agree, they do contradict one another. There are some policies that, they apply pretty broadly to the city. We recognize that there are some parts of the city where we want to preserve industrial uses, and there are some parts where it's no longer an appropriate use. My analysis is that generally, this area is transitioning to no longer be appropriate for industrial uses as it was when it was initially developed. However, the policy being a citywide application, I think, is still relevant to that.
Okay. So the ancillary retail uses, what is, so 88 residential units are possible here, but it's also possible there wouldn't be any, right?
That's right.
So, and the retail use possibilities are what?
Let me scroll back to, let's see. I'm gonna pull up my stuff.
I guess some context, because I'm familiar with this area, is that there is, like, newer, different types of manufacturing and industrial work going on. It's more production and maker space and artist's space, so there is significant production going on down here. So it is being used as industrial uses, just not maybe, like, back in the day.
I'm not asking that question as an objection, but when we're approving a zoning category, I think we have to be cognizant of what the possibilities are. So that's all I'm asking.
Sure. So the policy in here is speaking to you, that retail uses and office and residential mixed-use flume categories should be small and generally aimed at serving the employees of that facility. I found this to be inconsistent, because the entitlement of retail was larger and would serve a larger scale than what the office residential mixed-use flume designation envisions for that area, so that's generally where the policy's aimed.
So the question is, the IX zoning category. By the way, that says IX-3. I thought this was IX-5.
Thank you for pointing that out to me.
How much retail is, is it possible that all of this would be retail? I'm not really that familiar with the IX category.
Sure, yeah, and thank you for correcting that. I would like to just state, IX-5 is the correct request for this. I don't have the retail entitlement number in here, however, it's, that is a possibility. They could develop the site purely as retail. There's not a minimum requirement that housing be provided here. It's one of a variety of options of what would be allowed, should this be approved.
Thanks, thank you, sir.
Any additional questions? So this case has been deferred several times, and I don't believe we've heard from the applicant or the public, so we can do that now. And just a reminder, the applicant and those in favor get 10 minutes, and those opposed get 10 minutes.
Great. Good morning. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of the owner of these two properties, Mr. James Goodnight, who also owns the properties to the north there. Familiar with the area, the properties to the north, kind of the main tenants there are Brewery Bavanna, they have their production space there, and are in the process of opening up kind of a tasting area as well. And then also Anchorlight, which provides kind of community space for kind of creative arts, maker space. And so those are the two primary tenants in those two buildings to the north. The purpose of this rezoning is to kind of allow that type of space on the property to the south, but also maybe some mix of retail uses to serve the surrounding South Park neighborhood, as well as the opportunity for residential. As Sarah mentioned, this area is transitioning from kind of heavy industrial, and this property in particular is zoned heavy industrial because of a prior use on the site. And I'll just note also that this site is environmentally contaminated, so prior to any work on this site, cleanup will be required. And the reason for the height is to allow, because we anticipate the potential for a land use condition that doesn't allow residential on the ground floor, and of course, IX doesn't allow that either, but to provide some opportunity for vertical mixed-use. The case doesn't require that. The case, you know, the property could be developed for retail, entirely retail. I would say, kind of big picture, we are, although we're in the South Central CAC, we went there twice, received a vote last night, seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstained. The Hoak Street is the dividing line for the Central CAC, and so the majority of South Park, the South Park residential neighborhood, is in the Central CAC. So we went there on August 19th for a courtesy presentation to receive any comments. We really didn't receive a whole lot of questions or comments, but I know that, you know, this, even though this property's kind of right outside the South Park neighborhood area plan, you know, they kind of identified this area here, kind of between Person and Blunt, then kind of the Carolina Coach site, as a part of their kind of neighborhood, commercial focal area. And we kind of see this as tying into that by creating an opportunity for retail services, but also some additional kind of maker space and production space for this part of the community. There's really not a lot of retail and kind of service retail within walking distance to the South Park neighborhood on the, on the south side of MLK. And so, a few other items, we also see, kind of, again, looking toward the future, this site is currently serviced by transit, that there is a bus stop within, less than a quarter mile at, I believe, Bloodworth and Bragg. But also, this area was one of the targeted areas for enhanced transit service in the 2016 Transit Plan. And then also Hoak Street, you know, Cargill is just to the west of the, of the rail line there, but in the event that that redevelops, there's gonna be an enhanced connection between this site and Wilmington Street, where I think the anticipated BRT line serving the south side of town would be as well. So we think this site, again, is kind of well-positioned from a future transit standpoint as well. Again, positive feedback at the South Central CAC and the, and the Central CAC. We think the rezoning from IH down to IX gets rid of a lot of incompatible uses, the more noxious uses. And then we're kind of located, you know, good transitions, good distances from existing residential uses for the types of uses that are allowed in, in IX, both the kind of industrial as well as the retail, and opportunity for residential. So, can I answer any questions the commission may have?
Quick question. Well, what is directly across the street to the west on, what's contained in there?
Yeah. A lot of outdoor storage. I forget the particular use. I don't know if it was kind of a metal, it was a metal roofing area? Okay, yeah.
And then Bread, the Bread Company's on the corner.
Yeah, is that up this, that one? Yeah.
Is, is what?
The Bread Company.
And the very green area to the east is where?
So I believe a large portion of that is owned by Passage Home, Passage Homes, which, and I believe that property is also on the market and, I believe, under contract as well.
And then the church owns the bottom part.
Yeah, church owns down the southern end. Is that right?
Got it. There's no sidewalks on Saints Avenue and, and or South Bloodworth.
Correct.
Would you be building sidewalks
Yes.
as part of this project?
Yes, yeah, certainly, all, all along the frontage, and actually, the, the property to the north as well, I believe there was some provision as a part of their ASR when they were doing some change of uses, provision for some sidewalks in that area as well to the north. But the city did some pedestrian enhancements in this segment here of, of Hoak.
You went from IX-3 to IX-5 at some point, and LU-2 says four-story should be the maximum in this flume designation. Is there any reason why this couldn't be four stories?
No, I mean, again, this kind of gets back to the, the flume designation, and maybe it's... I was gonna see if we had a future land use map. Here we go. You know, from a future land use map standpoint, we think, you know, it has those kind of different areas. In addition to the recommended height table, there's also a comment kind of leading into the recommended height table, that also kind of context can drive the appropriate height. And so we thought, from an appropriate height standpoint, given our distance from the South Park neighborhood here, kind of along Garner and Hoak, this is one of the few areas that could support, you know, five stories and still provide adequate transitions. You know, we're not directly, you know, along Hoak Street or along Garner Street.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. There's still time left for anybody here who's come to speak in support. Seeing none, is there anyone here who's come to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back to the table for conversation and thoughts.
You have a question. Just since you're so familiar with the area.
Microphone, please. Use your microphone, please.
Are any of the prior uses such that would be detrimental to redevelopment for residential use?
I mean, they legally have to do any, if there is anything, they legally have to...
On the site. I was just kind of curious, from your observation. I know it's not part of it, but I'm always...
I bet they don't know, yeah.
I would say if there is, usually it's not a pure prohibition on residential, usually it's a prohibition on the ground floor, but then there are a variety of measures, depending on what the contamination is, and depending on what the risk is, there's a variety of measures that can be utilized to allow residential on the site, but usually not on the ground floor.
Any further comfortable questions?
So the staff report suggested that some potential uses in this category could be conditioned out without, usefully conditioned out. And I'm not sure why, actually, Sarah. So general indoor recreation, general outdoor recreation, commercial vehicles, vehicle repair, those, you suggested, staff suggested, that they might improve the consistency of this if they were conditioned out. These are more intense uses, I guess?
Yeah, the logic there was that the flume designation for office and residential mixed-use would not permit those types of uses, generally because of the impact they could have on the area with regards to traffic and noise. The thought behind having, I would imagine the logic behind having office and residential mixed-use between a general industrial and a moderate-density residential areas to provide a buffer zone that would have traffic and noise impacts that would be less to provide some relief between industrial and where there are residences. So those uses were things we identified as generally not suggested, and offered as office and residential mixed-use, and potentially more intense in their impacts.
Thank you. So I would suggest that the applicant consider conditioning those out. I don't know that I would insist on it, but...
So we, we certainly, you know, knew from day one that that, of that comment, and took that into consideration. A couple of things. One, I think what's driving the comment, and initially, I think that was the office and residential mixed-use designation on the future land use map. I think we were balancing that with the current zoning district of, you know, heavy industrial, and also balancing that with the zoning, the current zoning of the, kind of the entire surrounding area until you transition, you know, across Hoak Street and across Garner Road to, to the South Park neighborhood, that all of the surrounding properties in that area are zoned IX, you know, without conditions. And some of the uses, like an indoor recreation, you know, there's been interest in this area generally for kind of an indoor soccer, you know, opportunity to do some training. There's really not that opportunity in this area at all. And so, you know, when you kind of start going down the list of, of those uses, you kind of think about, you know, it starts hitting on a lot of uses that, you know, may be appropriate here, may serve a need here, but also, given the location of these two properties, you know, not only just adjacent to the kind of industrial space to the north, but also given the surrounding uses there, I think the owner was hesitant from the beginning to prohibit, you know, additional uses.
I understand. I'm actually not sure what's objectionable about indoor recreations, indoors. An outdoor recreation is on grass, but commercial vehicle sales might be something to take out of this case. A suggestion.
Would you be willing to remove commercial vehicles from the case, or is that, do you need to consult with your applicant?
Yeah, I would need to consult with our, with our applicant. And he's not here today, I'm happy to consult with him again. I feel like we've, we've had these conversations, I'm happy to have that conversation again, and can let the, let the commission know.
Okay, Madam Chairperson?
Yeah.
I'm fully comfortable to move this forward. I don't think that we necessarily need to...
That's fine.
I personally don't.
So that's, yeah. So that's...
I don't know how the, how the fellow commissioners feel, but
Okay.
I'm ready to move this forward.
How about everybody else?
I'm comfortable moving it forward. Made the suggestion, the applicant can do it or not, council will decide whether he should have done it.
We'll continue to consider it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to take a motion?
I move approval, as this case is consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan. And although it is inconsistent with the future land use map, do believe it, it fits in well with the existing uses on-site that are newer uses, and some of the kind of reinvestment in those industrial buildings. And the fact that we are, we do have a very limited amount of industrial land in, in close proximity to things in our, in our downtown.
And I would state for the record what the future land use map amendment would be. I believe you might want to confirm with Sarah, but it would be office residential mixed-use to business and commercial services. That's what I saw on the standing board.
Was that in here?
Can you just say ditto?
Oh, yeah. I would just say, it happens at council, but I would just...
Okay.
All right, so is that said now?
Is that...
Okay.
Ditto.
Okay. So do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I just want to say that it sounds like an interesting place and a place for new opportunity, and I'm, I'm very happy to see this move forward, because, you know, it sounds like a very exciting development area in the works, so...
May I add one thing, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I literally grew up here, four to blah 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 years ago. So it is exciting to see what's, what's happening in this community.
So it is exciting to see what's happening in this community and the investment that is being made for those currently in the community and those that are coming. And I'm just really excited about what's happening, so.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. We did get a second, right?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, sorry, thank you. To Z eleven nineteen Grove Avenue.
All right, Z eleven nineteen for five ten Grove Avenue. This case appeared before you at the last regular meeting of the planning commission and was deferred to this meeting to allow the applicant an opportunity to revise his conditions to meet some requests of the commission and that has since taken place and those revised conditions I'll go over in an upcoming slide and they are also in your backups, but just to recap on a summary of this case, it's a request to rezone point five two acres from R six with a special parking residential overlay district to R ten retaining that same special residential parking overlay district. The West CAC recommended denial of this case in a vote of six to four and just as a recap, that vote took place prior to this becoming a conditional use rezoning case, so this was presented to them as a general use case at the time. The deadline for planning commission action is September twenty sixth, twenty nineteen. Some of this you might be familiar with, so I'll make it brief. Again, the surrounding zoning in the area is that R six with the special residential parking overlay district. However, it transitions to a slightly greater density as you travel to the west of the site. There's also some pockets of mixed use developments near the intersection of Western Boulevard. The site's generally located very close to Western Boulevard, a few hundred feet to the south of it. There's a mixture of different densities of residential uses in the area and then some pockets of commercial uses along Western Boulevard. Zoomed in view of the site is showing it's located along Grove Avenue just south of Western Boulevard in a predominantly residential area. Couple of views looking in on the site, can see it's a residential area with houses that match the character of what currently exists there with some new construction that's taking place that you can see just across the street. And a summary of the proposed conditions, so there are some new conditions that appeared before you since the previous review on August thirteenth, those are underlined and I'll emphasize those. And these are a summary, the full text of the conditions is available in your backup. But the new proposed conditions include an open space area of at least fifty by fifty-six feet that will be provided. There was some discussion about this at the previous meeting and the applicant has submitted a condition that is more restrictive than code, so this meets the requirements. And the other new condition that was submitted was that the primary setback of the structure will be at least twenty feet from Grove Avenue and again, the exact text of this is located in the backup, this is just a summary for brevity's purposes. And the other conditions you've seen before, they include prohibiting apartments, limiting the building height to no more than thirty-five feet and some conditions that specify materials on the structure of the building as well as prohibiting vinyl siding. The existing versus proposed zoning, it's going from R six with that parking overlay district to R ten with conditions in the parking overlay district. The acreage is just under a half an acre, the residential density would go from an estimated six units could be on the site today to an estimated ten units, oh, my, per acre. The maximum units right now would be three to five and the setbacks would be slightly less than what is required by R six, however, due to the condition that would also increase the setbacks from twenty feet from the front street, which would be Grove Avenue. There's no urban form designation and again, while this map is showing a transit stop buffer, this is based on information prior to the adoption of the Wake County Transit Plan. We realize there will be bus rapid transit along Western Boulevard, however, the exact locations of the stops has not yet been determined, so staff does not consider these policies as we don't have enough information on the application of them at this time. This is consistent with the future land use map, which is moderate density residential and would suggest a residential density of no greater than ten units per acre, which this request would allow. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map and there again is no urban form designation. Consistent policies generally relate to housing, more compact development, capitalizing on transit access as we are aware that there will be bus rapid transit in the vicinity of the site. The only inconsistent policy is the conservation of single family neighborhoods and it's generally relating to an increase in density in an area that has a fairly low density character. There are no outstanding issues for this and the deadline for planning commission action is September twenty sixth and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
This still allows for attached housing though, correct?
That's correct, that was not prohibited.
Any additional questions? All right, we have heard from the applicant and the public at a prior meeting. Does anyone feel like they need to hear from the applicant or from the public again at this point?
Has the public had a chance to respond to the new conditions?
They have not. So do you want to provide that opportunity?
If everyone else is in agreement.
Okay, so you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to give the CAC a chance to review and vote on the proposed new conditions.
Oh, do you want to have folks speak here?
Oh, is there any one from the public?
Well, I guess, do you want to vote to open it up to give people that are here now some additional time to speak or did you want to defer it to the CAC?
To defer it to the CAC, I don't think.
So just to remind us, we did ask the applicant about going back to the CAC at the last meeting and he said that he didn't feel like it would be benef, you know, it would change their opinion of the case at that time or because the concerns were about, and I have to, it'll take me a second, included concerns about spot zoning, traffic and changing patterns of the neighborhood and nothing in his conditions will have an effect on that, so he didn't feel that going back to the CAC would change the vote. So do you still think you want to ask for additional time? Okay, all right, so do you want additional time for folks to speak here today? Is there anybody here that came to talk to us about this case today?
The applicant is here.
Right, but I don't know that the applicant really wants to speak if we're, unless we have questions, so do we have questions for him? Okay, so let's bring it to the table for any further discussion, does anyone have any thoughts they want to share at this point?
And I do appreciate the applicant making, bringing forward some new conditions. I have to admit, I struggle with this one just from the fact that it's mid-block. If it does still allow for a, I mean, a detached housing, I was expecting detached. I know that it kind of, I'm trying to convince myself that it's similar to the Cottage Court development pattern, but I got to tell you, just being familiar with the area, I mean, that is, that's just how it lays out in comparison to the other redevelopment that's already going on. You see a lot of split lots going on, but they're all single family, you know, it's R six over there anyway, so I feel like from a density standpoint, it's pretty good, but I'm really struggling with this one.
Okay, about anyone else?
I am inclined to support this, I think the conditions we have been offered are going to mitigate this and it is stone's throw from Western Boulevard, now I realize the transit on Western Boulevard is well into the future, but I don't object to attached housing per se. We have generous offer of open space. Twenty foot setback, I think makes it consistent with the rest of the street, I appreciate what you're saying, David. And CJ, I am a big believer in CACs, so I'm thinking about that one, but we don't ordinarily do that. And maybe we should, I mean, when a case changes so significantly, the CAC should maybe get a second shot at it. It's not customary. I don't know that that led to any conclusion there, so I'll stop.
Anybody else want to speak to this?
I mean, I'm ready to move this forward, I mean, the applicant has been, you know, patient and responsive, I don't agree with the apartment prohibition, but that's, you know, rooted in our commission. I think the ample amenity space beyond what he's required is there and he's still going to have to go through site plan. You know, for many of the other elements, so.
So for my part, I'm also ready to move this forward and I do support it, I do have some heartburn about not going back to the CAC, but given the comments about it probably not changing their opinion, I can understand that and we don't usually do that by form, but we have often asked for folks to go back and they have gone back. But, you know, we've not had anybody show up either in here for either opposition or in support, so I think if there was a huge outcry, the folks would be here, so I'm ready to.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion, so when will this go to council? If we make a recommendation, council will act on it when? They set a public hearing, right?
That's correct, they would receive your recommendation next week and there would be a suggested public hearing date, which is typically between fourteen and thirty days out. And city council would set a public hearing date and then conduct the public hearing.
So there would be time, I think, for the applicant to go back to the CAC as a courtesy. You don't have to, but go to the next CAC meeting and show them what you've proposed. Their vote won't matter to us, but it may matter to council. So that's a thought, can I suggest that?
Yes.
I tend to not agree with that. I, we have had no one show up, no one's contacted us, I mean, I just don't know, I mean, he's increasing housing in an area that needs housing. I just, I don't know if it's good practice to be doing that without more defined, you know, standards within our CAC system and within how that relates to decision making through us and through city council, those, that's my opinion, but I really, I don't want to support that suggestion.
Well, I mean, I don't think either one of them have to be a recommendation with the motion, but it can be some opinions that are shared back to the applicant.
Suggestion to the applicant, that's all.
So, any further conversation? Okay, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I move we approve, what's the number of this case? I don't have it in front of me. I move we approve the rezoning case Z eleven nineteen Grove Avenue. It is, I think, consistent with the comprehensive plan and I think it is consistent with our housing policies in this area of Raleigh.
Any further, oh, second, sorry.
Second.
And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to the next. And that is, I believe, Z sixteen nineteen, is that right? Yeah, Z sixteen nineteen Fayetteville Street.
Yep, Z dash sixteen dash nineteen on the west side of the two hundred block of Fayetteville Street is a proposal to increase the allowed height from five, seven and twelve stories to forty stories while retaining the base district downtown mixed use and the shopfront frontage. There was a conversation at your last meeting about some of the comments you received from the Raleigh Historic Developments Commission, which had requested that there be more information provided about the storefront openings on the ground floors of the buildings that have the facade preservation condition applied to them as to what elements of those openings may be either original to the period of historic significance or relevant to preserving for future establishment of the historic fabric of the area. And so we did have some review from preservation staff and conversation with the applicant, which you see reflected in the staff report in the comments in the historic preservation section of the impacts portion of the staff report. And so the notable things that came out of that review were for this building here, which is two thirty Fayetteville Street, these two basically pilasters or piers there that extend and continue this vertical detailing from the upper stories. While that has not been present during the entire history of the building, was removed for a period to allow for the McClellan's five and dime, which extended across the fronts of both of those two buildings. It has been restored very similarly to this image that you see here. And so preservation staff did note that if there was something that would be preserved or replaced as part of an offered zoning condition, that element would contribute to the historic fabric of the area. The other note from the staff report is for the Boylan Pierce Building where it mentions the leaded glass in these areas is, as you can see in this image, was present during the period of significance, is present today. And again, though it may not be the original material, it's, we were not able to establish whether it is or not, it does reflect what was present during the period of significance and so if there was something that could be retained or replaced as part of an offered zoning condition that would contribute to the historic fabric, that would be an element to look at. And so according to the condition as it's currently written, tho, those areas that you see outlined here, as well as all the window and storefront openings on this building could be removed or modified as part of a development plan. Otherwise, the case remains consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map and there are no outstanding issues.
All right, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, this has been, well, the applicant and the public have had the opportunity to speak on this case before, so if we want to hear from them just to talk, then we need to make a motion, but if we want to ask questions, we can ask questions of the applicant at this time. Does anyone want to ask questions of the applicant? All right, I'll ask a couple. So can you tell us about the response to the RHDC wish for fifteen feet setback rather than the twelve foot setback?
Yes, the applicant has spent a lot of time over the last couple of years trying to fashion a zoning for this block that would preserve the facade but allow development to occur at a greater height. And we at one point had ten feet of a setback, were asked to increase that to be twelve and did that and feel that that's appropriate. We had some great illustrations from other cities showing twelve foot setbacks and what that looks like from the street view from a pedestrian and looking at the fifteen, and we had a comparison of fifteen feet and felt that there was no difference from a pedestrian experience.
Okay, and can you speak to the leaded glass part of this building?
Yes, I think, and that's illustrative of, I think, down to this one kind of fine tuned issue with staff with respect to the facades of these buildings. The leaded glass to the owner is something that was recently in the refurbishment of the Boylan Pierce Building recreated to look like it did before. So the concern over this language and the condition, we've tried to be crystal clear with the exhibits that anything that's original to the facades must be preserved, cannot be altered or changed in any way. Those elements, mostly on the ground level, that have evolved and changed over time, we want to just maintain that flexibility and not choose a particular period in history and try to write that into a condition that staff would have to enforce. We do have the COA process for many of these buildings that is the exact. We do have the COA process for many of these buildings that is the exact right forum to determine, adjudicate those changes and making sure they're appropriate. So, again, this is something that was re, at great expense by the owner, you know, recreated recently with that building.
Thank you. So, I see we have staff from Historic Preservation, so I would like to, to know if you have any response to these particular items or any other changes that were made in order to try to address the RHDC.
First, Tanya Tully, staff. First thing I'd like to say is I'm, we're, I, I think that the applicant did a really good job providing the illustrations that make it really clear what is to stay and what isn't, that that was, it's really effective between the drawings and the, and the photographs. It'll, it'll be easy. As far as the sort of, the, the two detailed questions, you know, as far as the one storefront building, yes, the COA will definitely come into play and, and ultimately make the decision on that, unless somewhere down the line, the applicant chooses to, you know, de-design, or the owner decides to de-designate the building. And also, you know, if in fact they're not original, I think the wording of the condition, you know, does say something appropriate. I mean, staff would certainly prefer that the, you know, wonderful expense that went in to recreate something be maintained. At this point, I think what staff would do is if the conditions continued as they are, we would take it back to the commission and let them know what is hap, and then they can come forward to the public hearing with city council, and if they wish to, you know, speak either, you know, disagreeing with what staff put in the staff report or saying they really do agree and would encourage, you know, the commission, I mean, council to support that, then they can do it that way. I don't see any reason to, you know, send it back to the commission this time or, you know, move further, I mean, delay it any further as a result of these details.
And do you have any feeling about the twelve versus the fifteen feet?
The commission was pretty, pretty strong about that. They talked about specifically, they saw the, the illustrations, the, that, that Mr. Paul mentioned, and they, they still felt like it wasn't quite enough.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for the response. Any other questions or comments from folks about this case before we take a motion?
Yeah, I expressed myself last time about this, so I'll try not to repeat too much of it. I, I do think that the rezoning of downtown, the mass rezoning that took place four years ago was a mistake. I'm not against entertaining specific rezoning applications for each of these sites or for any place in downtown, but I think our conditional use zoning process is the way to go about redeveloping downtown. To upzone all of these properties to a forty-story entitlement without knowing a thing about how they will lay out, what the design will be, how they'll address the street, how they'll address each other, to me is a mistake.
Any other thoughts?
From kind of a historic standpoint, I mean, Raleigh has very few historic, truly historic assets, particularly in the downtown area, that are of as much significance as these are. I mean, every picture that you see, you know, downtown Raleigh going back for over a hundred years reflects these buildings. I'm just, I cannot get behind the rezoning of these as it stands now. I mean, just, I've tried to talk myself into what kind of setback would allow for that, and in ten, twelve feet, I mean, mine would be significantly more than even the fifteen feet to even start to entertain it. So, from my perspective, I'm not in support of it.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Are you ready to make a motion, or do you have thoughts?
I'm ready to make a motion. I can certainly share thoughts.
Okay, please.
I mean, I learned a little bit more about this, and it sounds like this has been a very long process, and respect that, and respect the consideration I think that has been made on all sides of this conversation, and I'm ready to move it forward. I also do think, a side note about our historic elements, I also have a strong connection to our historic assets in town, and I do feel like, you know, there's a reason that so much of the development is being forced on these lots where these historic buildings are. And I think it's because we're saying no to some things, and by saying no to some things, we're saying yes to things like this. I can get into it more in another forum, but that's also why I've wanted to bring up the idea of land use capacity analysis so that we understand how much we can put where, and look at this in a broader context of our city. Anyway, if no one else has any.
Any thoughts? All right, let's, let's hear a motion.
I'm, move approval of Z-1619 as it is consistent with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further con, conversation? So, I am very conflicted about this. I, I am quite concerned about the historic properties on this and agree that we have limited number of them, as David said, that are of this kind of significance. I also understand that we're, we have a lot of people moving into the area, and this may generate additional homes and a mixed-use kind of environment in a, an exciting part of town. However, I, I struggle with RHDC making a request that doesn't seem to have been met, the twelve versus fifteen feet. The additional things that have been done, I applaud, so thank you for going that far. So, I, I'm gonna end up voting against this, but we'll see how it goes, we'll see where the boat lands. So, any further conversation? So, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So, what's the count? How many do we have? You're in favor, so we have two in favor and four against, is that right? All right, so, does that make the motion fail?
Yeah, so your motion, your motion to recommend approval has failed.
Has failed, so we need to make a counter motion to recommend against, recommend denial, and then it'll flip the script.
Probably.
And it'll probably pass as a, as a vote, right?
Yeah, you're giving council your recommendation, so as of now, you have not voted to recommend approval.
Right.
So, if you.
So, if you want to, we want to vote to recommend denial, then that's where we are at, okay.
You move it forward without recommending approval?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you can move, technically, you can always move forward without any type of recommendation, but I think if you want to tell council what your recommendation would be, it would be a good idea to, to make a motion in the counter.
Yeah, so we can vote against it, and then it will go forward, and the council can make their decision.
Yeah, and I will make that motion that we recommend denial of this zoning case to city council.
Second.
It didn't, denial because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Denial because it's not in the best interests of Raleigh.
Not in reason, well, great.
Okay. And David seconded, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we've just flipped it, and it will go to si, city council as recommending denial, and city council will do as they wish with it. All right, thank you.
Order two.
She wants to know who.
Matt and CJ.
Thank you. So, the next case is nineteen nineteen, Z nineteen nineteen, I believe.
Yes, hello? Good morning. So, you last heard this case a few months ago. It was deferred two weeks ago because the CAC had rescheduled, so they have now been to the central CAC, which did recommend approval sixteen to zero, and has been to the RHDC. That was another reason for the original deferral, and I have a slide about what, what they talked about later. So, just to refresher, this is the, the site in a DX twelve shopfront zoning. I find the downtown incredibly hard to read, so I drew a yellow line there. It is most of the block on the west side of the street, of West Street, from the Dillon Building, so that remaining block is a plaza connected to Union Station, and technically not in the Depot National Register District, but adjacent to it, and certain buildings were eligible in contributing, should the Depot, there was a study for expansion in 2013, but not in the district itself. This is Hargit Street looking eastward to downtown, so the north side of the site and the view from the other direction, so all, you know, two-story-ish warehouse buildings. And then this is the public plaza on the south side of the street that is owned by the city. One change to the conditions since last time, which is the, and I realize now normally we have the strike through, and I just deleted it, but is the removal of, it was specifying streetscape on, on West Street and on Hargit Street, so that has been removed, so that would be determined at site plan instead of now. The other conditions are all unchanged, so some uses prohibited, the affordable housing condition, we went through last time, prohibition of surface parking between the building and the street, and pedestrian access, so similar to what would be in the frontage, and then some standards for, for building materials to be allowed. So, going from DX twelve to DX forty, basically multiplied by four for a lot of the stuff. Retail presumed in both to be just on the first floor, so no real change. But in terms of residential units, that's how the math works. This is consistent with the future land use map, but inconsistent with the urban form, so the downtown designation would imply a frontage, and so there were some elements of that that were applied. Now one less than it was previously, but there are certain key elements that are still not present in the condition, so inconsistency remains. The site is in the downtown West Gateway Plan, which I will zoom in, in the station area core. So, the original West Gateway Plan envisioned the station in a different place, Union Station, I should say. So, this is the updated version, which has it in the right spot, but the policy for the station area core remains unchanged, because although it did move, it still affects this area to the right. So, the policy there is for a four-story or thirty-dwelling unit minimum, no maximum. Consistent with quite a number of policies, having a lot to do with the provision of a transit station and also the affordable housing requirement. So, there's two, two full pages, and also downtown being high density. The inconsistent policies relate to urban form. There is one here underlined, so in preparation for that RHDC meeting, I did look a little bit more closely at that chapter of the plan, given what I, all the new material I had to look at. So, I did add one policy as inconsistent, but it didn't change any of the overall consistency. So, given that the, the buildings, some of the, two of the three buildings are eligible, I did add this policy in. So, RHDC recommended approval. There were three things they, they wanted to see. One was a step back on the third floor. They would like more detailed list of what materials would be permitted or not, and then some stronger requirements for the design of parking decks. There was also a fourth thing that they wanted to be included on the MOU, so between the city and the State Historic Preservation Office. Not really related to the actual development, but. So, but they did recommend approval to respect the applicant's sense of urgency. So, your, your deadline is the twenty-third, there is one meeting left, and as of now, the only outstanding condition is that those, none of those things with RHDC requested have been included to date. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
I, I am interested in the DT one point one six, high-density public realm amenities, so this does address the plaza in front of Union Station, and we don't know how, do we? Do we know what the, that side of the building will look like at this point?
No, no. The city is, the, sorry, the, the plaza is owned by the city. So, it will likely remain a plaza, but.
Well, it won't mess with that plaza, but.
Correct. No, there's nothing.
How is the building addressing that?
Right. And that policy was, so Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources review of the case said that this was a particularly, from all their planning, an area where extra amenity area would be desired by them. So, that, that impacts triggered this policy, that's why it's in there.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we have heard from the applicant and the public before, but the applicant has been in touch and has, would like to speak for five minutes to us, so we need a motion to make that happen, and, and we would also be making a motion to allow five minutes for opposition. So, is anyone willing to make the motion?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you've got your five minutes.
Thank you, good morning. I'm Jamie Schwadler with Parker Poe at three oh one Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I just wanted to highlight three changes between the case when you heard it in June and now before you today, and it'll explain a little bit of the changes that Ira went through. First is the removal of the streetscape condition. We originally had a condition that specified what the treatment would be on both Hargit and West Street, but we met with staff to determine how some transportation planning would impact the site, specifically the BRT potential routes, and learned that by default, that both streetscapes would have a mixed-use streetscape, so even if we don't apply it as a zoning condition, that will happen at site plan. So, we removed that, and that will also give us flexibility to incorporate the BRT platform if and when that comes along, without jeopardizing any compliance with zoning conditions. Second, we received unanimous approval from the RHDC in July. We explained the unique nature of this federally funded project and the oversight that the city will have, and let me explain that a little bit. This was a courtesy review by the RHDC because we're not in a overlay district, we're not in a national historic district, and the buildings on the site are not on the national register. They were evaluated and determined to be contributing, but the, the overlay district was not expanded to include this site. So, they were providing oversight and, and a courtesy review. But like Raleigh Union Station, this site was acquired with federal funds, and so it will be required to go what's called, through the Section one oh six process of the National Historic Preservation Act, and that will include negotiation and entry into an MOU, a memorandum of understanding between SHPO, the Federal Highway, Federal Railroad Administration, and the city. That, because of our timing, will most likely occur at the site plan stage, and during that process, all interested parties will evaluate the structure for potential preservation opportunities as well as the integrity of the existing structure. And so, that Section one oh six process has its own enforcement mechanism that is above and beyond and separate from zoning conditions. It's federally required, we'll have to go through that process, and we talked at that, about that at length with the RHDC. And at that point, the experts about historic preservation will be at the table to determine which portions of the, the site are eligible for preservation and be making those judgment calls. And so, the RHDC understood that due to our timing, this meant that the Section one oh six process would come after the zoning decision would be decided, and they wanted a vote to be kind of at the table to, to be involved in the MOU discussion, which we agreed with. We already have a condition that speaks to the materials. I believe that they wanted to just secure that, make sure that was a zoning condition, which we've included, and we will be required to meet step back at the site plan stage, so we talked about that a little bit. So, I think the recommendation should be looked at with that lens, and that the Section one oh six process will come after the zoning decision in which the RHDC and the city will have a, a voice, as well as the SHPO and, and federal agencies. And then finally, third, last week, we received unanimous approval from the central CAC after an additional meeting with the Boylan Heights neighborhood stakeholders, and we're very happy with the, the discourse that we received at the central CAC and the vote to approve that was unanimous. Which brings us to today and what hasn't changed. The case still includes a voluntary affordable housing component, which we expect to increase as this case goes forward to city council. It still concerns the federal twenty million dollar tiger grant for the bus facility that's specifically tied to this site. Grant that was written by the city, because as in your staff report notes, this is a critical component of the Wake County Transit Plan to have the bus facility at this site, and that, that twenty million dollar grant was obtained for that purpose. We still need to move forward with the zoning to meet our federal deadline of construction and entering that MOU by September. and entering that MOU by September of 2020. So we're under a pretty stringent timeline to deliver this project, and if we miss that deadline, it could put the $20 million grant in jeopardy, as well as force us to sell the site to a higher bidder in order to pay back the federal funds with which we acquired the site. So two federal sources of money at stake here, and that's why I wish we went under this deadline, I wish we didn't have this pressure on you, but we are where we are. We're working through the RFP process and should have more information, but we don't have that today, and so I'm here before you requesting that we be able to move this case forward, so the decision can be made by the City Council, at which time we should have more information at the time of the City Council public hearing, in which case we fully intend to add those zoning conditions as appropriate. But today, we'd ask to move this case forward, so that we can deliver this important public transit and affordable housing case to the city and not jeopardize the funds that are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second discussion.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do, you have, so the RFP process is still underway, you haven't chosen a development partner, is that what I understood?
That's correct. We're having difficulty from the development community because of the flush amount of projects out there, there are many competing deadlines, and they're having a hard time delivering things on time.
So if we move this to City Council, which we probably will today, you'll be in front of council for a hearing in a month. Will you have a developer then?
We'll have the responses back, we should have the responses back next month, and so before the public hearing, we should have the input to discuss what we received. My understanding is we can't add, well, there'll be a question of whether we can add additional conditions between sending the case forward to the City Council, but I think we would be in a position to discuss, we're willing to entertain additional conditions that are most likely more stringent, and particularly the affordable housing. We hope to have additional feedback from the RFP process at that time.
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, that's important. I don't want, I don't want to slow this down, I understand your deadline pressure, but I think council ought to know what the affordable housing offer is before it acts. Hopefully, they will know, or they won't act.
Well, at this point, the offer is a minimum of 20 units at 80% AMI for a minimum of 10 years.
Yes, and that's more than anyone else has ever offered, so I give you that, but it's, can be improved upon. Anyway, thank you.
I understand.
Any more questions for the applicant? So once again, I would like to bring forward our staff from Historic Preservation, just to see if there are additional thoughts about moving this forward based on the RHDC wishes and vote, if there are any hitches that are foreseen here.
I don't think so. I thought she fairly accurately represented it, other than it's, Depot District is not an overlay district, it is National Register Historic District, and the, after the vote, the commission actually had some conversations about this and understand that it is not actually listed in the National Register, and one of the reasons that it was brought forward is because it is a city project and adjacent to the National Register District. We're very comfortable with the Section 106 process, and they will definitely be involved in, you know, negotiating, you know, what gets saved and what doesn't, and how to impact it.
So will that process look at what the relationship is between this development and the Union Station Plaza? I mean, I realize it's, we're designing a bus entry here, so it's not going to be a beautiful thing maybe, but it needs to relate to that plaza in some good way.
So what gets looked at through the Section 106 process is somewhat variable. You know, the goal going into it is also, is always, you know, retention of historic fabric, and then you sort of look at design, and what comes out as mitigation can vary. And if the, I can't think of the right word, but the people who are involved care about that relationship, then that can be a piece of mitigation. Like, for example, Union Station went through the same process, and there was some retention of historic fabric, but then one piece of mitigation was, you know, interpretive artwork that is coming in. And so there's a lot of flexibility about, you know, how to balance the loss of, potential loss of historic fabric with, you know, how to make up for it.
How to make up for it.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for applicant or staff?
I do have a question for applicant.
Question for the applicant?
For applicant, I'm sorry. When you were talking about the affordable housing with the AMI of 80% for 10 years, is that per unit or per applicant?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Meaning that once the 10 years has expired in one of those designated facilities, does it continue with the next applicant, or it is fulfilled as 10-year base?
Well, the way that the city started with the template is that it would be a deed restriction on the property that would be recorded, so regardless if it's one applicant or a different applicant each year, it would be deed restricted for 10 years, and after that 10th year, it would expire unless there was some revisiting of the condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bring it back to the table. Any further...
This is probably not needed, but I think you did five minutes for the applicant and opposition.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, thank you, yes. So is there anybody else here to speak in favor? Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Anybody here? Okay, seeing none, let's bring it back to the table. So are we ready to entertain a motion?
Bring forward, I'd like to recommend approval that the resent is 19 is consistent with relevant policies in the comprehensive plan, and approval of resenting requests sent to public.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe that's the end of, oh no, I take it back, no, it's the omnibus.
No.
All right, yes, that we didn't hear last time. So TC 1D 18, omnibus list of regulations. So before you get started, I want to get a feel for whether folks read through this and feel like they will need some time to digest, and perhaps we need to put it in text change, or do you think we can process it here?
I definitely had, like, I struggled to understand the path to here. I was trying to look through previous and maybe hearing how we got here, because it says 18, TC 1D 18, but I feel like this is the first we've seen of it.
It is the first we've seen of it. It went through committees, so we can talk about the history here, but if you look through the contents of it, did you feel like you needed some time to digest what's in it? Because I did, so I would feel like moving this to text change, but it doesn't mean that we can't hear how we got here before.
Okay, I'm happy to...
So do you want to hear that before we decide?
But I agree that we should, because I hadn't had enough time to really adjust all of it.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I have a presentation, I can go through the history and just kind of give a high-level overview.
Okay.
And what I tried to do in your packets is, this text change kind of originated in a council committee, and I was not present during most of those meetings. A lot of that took place with Travis and some of the subject matter experts, and so what I tried to do was compile kind of the rationale that came out of that committee. Since it moved from there and was authorized, staff was really just cleaning up specific language. We didn't change substantively a lot of what came out from that committee, but what I'll do is I'll go over the history, give an overview, and then you guys can guide the discussion from there if you want to continue on or move to committee.
Thank you.
All right. So here's just an overview to kind of frame where we're at. Almost a year ago, back in 2018, the City Council received a presentation on the text change program that contained an omnibus list essentially just various categories of items that came up through either staff ideas, through comments that were made during public meetings about various tweaks to the ordinance, and these spanned a wide range of topics. And they did their best, staff did their best to put them into four different categories or buckets. So those were process, use, regulations, and typographical errors, errors, excuse me. And those are just general categories. There is some overlap, especially with the typographical errors, because oftentimes typographical errors mean that the regulation is effectively unable to be enforced, or if you correct a typographical error, you're in essence changing materially the regulation, just because there's some ambiguity there, ambiguity. So you'll see that the typographical errors especially is kind of spread out amongst the three, although it did come forth as its own item. So now we are on the regulations portion. We've made it through process, use, and generally speaking, typographical errors. So this started about a year ago, and that's why the text change has that number, is because that's when it was originally discussed, and we have now kind of moved on to this, hopefully this last segment for 2018. So this particular section, the Growth in Natural Resources Committee completed its review of these regulation items throughout the spring of 2019. As I said, there was some lengthy discussion there and input at that point from various areas, particularly urban forestry, also different areas of the planning department. And on April 10, 2019, they provided their final recommendations to the council, and then on April 16, the City Council authorized staff to prepare a draft ordinance. So between that point and now, staff has conducted a review, it took us a while to kind of mull through these various items and make sure that they were easy, you know, understandable, and also able to be enforced, and work with the various other sections of the code. And then, of course, we had a gap where there was no meetings, and that's why it's being brought to you at this date. So I'm going to go very high-level, kind of propose changes, and I realize this is high-level. The exact text, of course, is in your supporting materials, and I have a backup of the PDF if we really want to get into that detail, although maybe we'd save that for text change committee. But the proposed change is at a high level. The first is to allow cottage court lots and townhouse lots to not front on a public street. Second would be modifying the lot width methodology for townhouse lots that do not front on a public street. This is more a technicality, just because the way the ordinance is written thus far, it really refers to, width is measured in relation to the primary street, and of course, if you're not fronting there, it'd be hard to measure width. So it's really just a minor change, but that, it was for clarity purposes to Development Services staff. Third, it would allow for the exchange of open space within a conservation development, and there are certain limitations that you would see, that you'll see in the ordinance about how that may be restricted, but it would provide some flexibility. Would clarify that height is to be measured in stories and feet, there was just some ambiguity there, and this is correcting just a single word to make that clear to the reader. The next would be reducing the rear yard setback requirements for mobile homes, just respecting and understanding the size of most of these units make it difficult to comply with that standard as it currently exists. Third would allow for taller amateur radio antenna while creating additional regulations for these structures. So that's probably one of the biggest material changes, and it came out of some input received from said subgroup of enthusiasts, as I understand it, to make sure there is some ability for them to retain these in their yard, and as I understand it, there's not many, but these regulations would kind of more formalize how we plan to regulate those moving forward. Also, reducing required bicycle parking for outdoor recreation facilities, again, just bringing this into a more reasonable realm as staff and also the committee understood it, the current standard would likely in some instances produce an excess of bicycle parking, so this is just crafting a more tailored standard. Reducing vehicle parking for uses near high-frequency transit service, so this came out of some additional discussions actually in a subcommittee, in a separate committee, and this was just looking again at ways to incentivize development, it was actually a Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, and ways to incentivize development and housing affordability and transit ridership in specific areas. So basically increasing the allowance and reduced vehicle parking for uses near high-frequency transit service. The next would be exempting single-family and two-family uses from the requirement to screen mechanical equipment, so I believe this is something that was incorporated into the old code, and so this is just making clear an allowance that these do not have to meet those screening requirements specifically for those types of building types. Next would be permitting small-scale freestanding signs in the manufactured housing district. After that, shifting maintenance responsibility of privately-owned street trees from the city to the property owner, where this does occur. Previously, an easement would be granted, in this case, that responsibility, it would still be required to plant them, however, there would be no maintenance responsibility from the city's perspective, it would be on the property owner if they choose to go that route. And lastly, there's language added to the code to make it more user-friendly and easier to administer, specifically with regards to tree conservation. You'll see there's a number of areas in there that are, majority of those are cleanup. There's about four of them, I believe, Section 17, 18, and 19. And that concludes kind of the high-level overview, so I realize there's a lot to get into there, but I do have some sections of the code here, and as I said, the PDF available if we want to discuss particular sections.
So what's the will of the commission? Do people feel like they need a little extra time to take this up in text change and really chew through it, or do you want to hold it at the table and deal with it here?
I can do that.
Which one?
Just hold it so that we can spend a little bit more time. I'm happy with either.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'm happy to bucket the text change.
Personally, I would have more time and less split attention to do it in an evening rather than trying to get it done here, because I think it's going to take a little time. And I need to get to work. So I don't know how others feel about that, but, you know, text change puts us in a less formal setting and allows us to really chew on things a bit, so I would have a preference to go there.
I think that's probably the more appropriate place to really chew out anything that needs to be, and if not, just make the back here a little bit quicker.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I'll move that we send this omnibus text change proposal to the text change committee.
Would this be at the next September meeting, this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll place it on the agenda. We do have a couple other items there as well, the cottage court and there's also the infill subdivision text change as well.
Right.
I will say, I didn't have a lot of problems with it, I can't say that I studied it in the detail needed. Section four about open space shifting within conservation districts, I wondered about that. I'm not on text change, so I would...
Doesn't mean you can't attend.
Oh, that's true, I can. So I'm curious about that one, otherwise I didn't really have any issues with the...
Yeah, I had questions about Section four as well, and Sections one and 13, so I know that I'm going to want to talk about this more significantly.
Okay.
And...
If there's any other sections, I'm happy to try to come to text change prepared with some more backup materials, because a lot of this discussion took place after my involvement.
I think including the townhouse changes to make it easier to create townhouses as opposed to having to do everything condominiums would be a huge step forward in the housing side. I mean, I don't know, I'm not part of the text change, but to the extent that you can push that to be the favored housing type of that design would be a real benefit to homeownership.
All right. So do we actually need a motion to send this to text change, or can we just refer it?
I think you, but you haven't heard it here, so typically you just refer it.
Okay. So let's just refer it to text change committee and take it up there in September.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That brings us to, I've got to get back to my agenda. The minutes. All right, so, does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes?
I will make a motion, I read them, so we'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So next, the report from the chair. Okay, so next, the report from the chair. You know, we have formed our text change committee, but I have not officially turned in committee assignments about the strategic planning and the transportation committees yet. I pretty much know who's on strategic planning, but we still have a newly-appointed member to pick up. And she'll be here next time. So I'll get those committees formed, and hopefully we'll have a replacement for Joe as well and figure out where they belong in the committees.
Madam Chair, who's, so pending the change, I'm still the chair of the Transportation Committee, I guess. Who else is on that?
On the Transportation Committee? Hang on, let me pull up my spreadsheet.
Michelle, I think, was on there. And David, were you on there? Okay, so I was talking to Jason earlier at Myers.
And Shelley.
And you're on the, good, so it's a good, there's a good group. They've done some work that I asked them to do to brief us on the transportation, the transportation-oriented development ordinance in Charlotte, did I say that right? The TOD ordinance in Charlotte, and they're prepared to do that. So I'd like to make that the subject of the next meeting and have a meeting on September 10 at 8:00 a.m.
Okay. All right, so members who are there or are part of the committee, please take note that we will meet, or you will meet, at 8 o'clock on the 10th.
That's only an hour meeting now.
That's an hour meeting. Yeah, for now.
We have to hustle through.
And we meet on 303 or 305, one or the other.
Who does the notice for that? Do you guys do it? Who does the notice for the subcommittee?
You do it, Jason? Notice, no?
I don't know.
I think maybe talk to Travis, just to make sure somebody knows to notice the meeting.
Okay, so I don't have anything else. It's a report from the chair. We've gotten one report from the members. Anybody else have anything that they want to report? Okay, a report from the planning director, please.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good meeting today. You have a short memorandum from me. And the main items on there are reporting on the council action from August 20. And I think that those kind of speak for themselves. The one thing I did want to say just a couple of words about was the residential infill study that is going on. And just a reminder to all of us that this was something that the City Council initiated to look, initially grew out of the concern about steep slopes and stormwater for commercial. But then there's also considerable interest in infill development and what our standards are and what they should be, if there are any changes that might be appropriate to govern the development in infill areas. The, there's a, the study is underway. There's a survey that's live, you've probably gotten information about that. The first day that the survey went out asking for opinions and thoughts from residents of Raleigh, there were, the first hour, there were a couple hundred responses. And in the first week, there were 1,000 responses. So the survey is being actively responded to, so that's really good news. We're also working with a consultant called Studio and arranging for a visit from the consultants to come and do some field work here about our infill situation circumstances. We'll be talking to stakeholders, and we'll be arranging engagement meetings with the consultant. So we're underway and moving on that study, so happy about that.
Thank you. And I understand this may be your last meeting with us, is that right?
It probably is, yes. Because Ken Bowers is doing very well, and his first day back is scheduled to be next week, so.
Well, I can't tell you how much we appreciate your stepping into his shoes for, I guess, a couple of months to help out. And thank you for being here and for your advice for the meeting, so.
Thank you very much, yes. It's been a really good experience. I can't say that I've been crazy about the commute every day from Chapel Hill. But other than that, I've really enjoyed this opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So, and then there's pending items. Real quick, I've lost my internet connection. Anyone got there still on? Looking at pending items, I've lost my internet connection. Ah, thank you. All right, so we will have our next planning commission meeting on the 10th of September. Our committee as a whole will take place, and there will be cases in that on September 26. Our next text change committee meeting, we will have three items in there, including the two that are on the list of pending items now and the one we just referred with the omnibus. And strategic planning will be kicking off with Mr. Gary at some point as chair. And transportation, we just said that we'll pick that up on September 10 at 8:00. So any questions? All right, any further discussion before we adjourn? All right, thank you, everybody, great meeting.